Can you hear me? Good evening, everyone. All right, welcome. Look, I want to say, we're going to meet our cabinet in a few moments. They're just going to make a couple of brief opening remarks. We're very excited about this meeting tonight. We know the passion that runs deep in this community. That's part of the reason why we're here. We're here for a lot of other reasons, not the least of which is we take pride in learning from the community directly. We've done our homework. We know what's been said at the Neighborhood Board meetings. I'll talk to you a little bit about that on our ground rules tonight, but we've got some introductions and a few things I'd like to do, but I really want to start it off with a poule, and I'm going to ask Kathy Thurston to come up. Before you start that, Kathy, just so everybody knows, we're recording this. It's actually this year live on O'Lelo TV, too. And the reason why we record it, just so you know, is we want to make sure that we handle, to the best of our ability, everything and anything that gets said tonight in our follow-up. Okay? So just know that, and then we'll talk a little bit about the quote-unquote "ground rules," if you will. We're going to start right on time at 6:30. We're going to rent, uh, we're going to end at 8:30. Most of us will stay around a little bit after that. But before I get into the introductions, I want to bring up Kathy. Where's Kathy? I just, here she is. Okay.
Aloha. Thank you, Mayor. Can we mahalo, our mayor? Thank you. I wanted to, you know, most of us in the room are from this community. I live right down the street, so I've been in Kailua for over forty-something years, raised in Kanoehe, but I think one of the most impressive things about our community is the amount of people that love to be engaged, right? We're engaged, and that's how the mana'o is, to get better, to do things well. And there's a Hawaiian saying, "To kuli a ikanu'u," which is to strive for the highest, strive for excellence. And I love that about our community because we can see that it's often that, even in the very active conversations. But I wanted to start with aloha, and many of you might know Auntie Pilahi Paki. She's from the early nineteen hun- well, nineteen fifties, but in nineteen eighty-five, she shared at the East-West Center this "Oli aloha." It goes like this. "A kahae en Nahawai." It's talking about be kind, Hawaii. "Lo kahi a kulike." Be united and stand together. "Olu'olu." Be agreeable or work together well. The H for ha'a, ha'a, which represents humility, to be humble as we go about our kuliana and responsibility. And the last E, "Ahonui," for perseverance, that we're not quitters. The people that first landed here, many, many years before their European counterparts were even on the oceans, they were circumnavigating the globe. Proud people. I feel like it's very important, before I poule, to remember to look back at those that came before us, those that have put in the time, the energy, the effort, the sacrifice. And most importantly, we can learn a lot from the people that first came here, our Hawaiian, our Kanaka, our Lahu'i. We can learn so much. And so I just encourage with this poule that we would really look back and learn from our ancestors of the past as we move forward to look for solutions in our future. And that is asking for the presence of the one that's created all things, to be with us as we "kuka kuka," as Hawaiians like to say, to speak, to be respectful, to be humble, and yet to look for solutions. I encourage, I know, having been active in this community for a few years myself, from things like the city has supported our projects, Okuaaina, rebuilding of the Heao, the oceans, so we just pray that there would be continued partnership. With that, can we, again, welcome our mayor back and his cabinet? Mahalo.
All right, I want to do a couple of quick introductions of some people that we have in the audience. First of all, Council Chair Tommy Waters is here. Tommy, thank you for coming out. Your very own is someone that, who really, I don't know if you could get anybody better to be on the City Council than Esther Kia'ina. That's the... I don't think there's any other council members in here, right? Is Jared in the room? No, he's not here, right? Is Chris Lee in the room? Chris, Chris Lee's in the back, right there, Chris. And, and I don't see Brenton Awa. I don't think so, but he's supposedly going to join us. State Representative Natalia Hussey-Burdick, is she here? Yes, there you are. Thank, thank you for being here. Lisa Kidigawa, is Lisa here? She was in a meeting earlier with me today. I think she's here yet. And Scott Marioshi, is Scott here? Nope, he's going to be joining. And then Lisa Martin is here. I saw Lisa. Where's Lisa? Now, one of the things we got to do when we came in a little bit more than three years ago was set up a youth commission, and we have really found that to be a fascinating experience in our efforts to really encourage young people to get involved in an early stage in government. And so we have, um, one, if not two, here. I know, I know Maya Payne is here, right? I just saw Maya. Isn't she here? There you are, Maya. And is Mackenzie? Mackenzie's here. Now, this is really good stuff because I'm going to put them on the spot. I'm going to give each a couple of minutes to tell you about who they are and maybe why they're on the youth commission, completely unedited, you can have at it, anything you want to say. It's all yours.
Thank you so much.
Couple of minutes, though, okay?
Thanks. Okay, I'll keep it short. Hi, everyone. My name is Maya Payne, and I was born and raised in Kailua, and I'm currently serving as the Kailua District Representative on the Honolulu Youth Commission. And this is Mackenzie, and she goes to the same high school as me, actually, Kalahia High School, and so I'll hand it over to her in a second. So I, being born and raised here, I've been in public school K through 12. I went through Kinalo Elementary School. I also went to Kailua Intermediate School, so here, and now I'm currently going to Kalahia High School. And so having that experience has given me better insight into the public education system, you know, how great it is, how much effort people put into it, the teachers, the staff, the DOE and our representatives, and also given me a broader perspective onto what we can do to improve it. For example, I've been involved in my elementary school, doing a science club, trying to bring some hands-on experience I've had as a high schooler. And so the reason I joined the youth commission is because through my, not only community upbringing, but also involvement, I do marine biology research on the weekends, aimed at understanding anthropogenic effects on corals in particular, and how to preserve the biodiversity that we all hold so dear in our oceans, and also through just being involved in my school community and various volunteering projects. I was brought on by Councilwoman Esther Kia'ina, so thank you so much for opening that door for me. And so my main goal as a youth commission representative is to, you know, be available. So if anyone wants to chat with me after the meeting, I'm happy to chat, and I'm currently working on some bills and resolutions that I'm drafting to try to help Hawaii reach its 100% renewable energy goal by 2045 a little faster, which is awesome that we're already on that track. And so, yes, and just stay open-minded and try to hear all of the voices and give a voice to not only all of our community members, but all of the youths of our community, too. So, yeah, I'm really happy to have this position, and thank you to everyone who's made it a possibility. Here's Mackenzie.
All right. Hi, everyone. My name is Mackenzie Brammer. I think Maya covered most of it, but I'm a junior at Kalahia. I went through a similar track as Maya. I went to Kinalo Elementary School also. I went to middle school here, and I'm currently attending Kalahia High School. I'm involved in a lot of student council and politics kind of things, so I did recently attend the students', uh, secondary student conference, so I work on a lot of state bills and stuff like that, but then I also love being on the youth commission. I was appointed by Mayor Blangiardi, thank you. So I've been on the youth commission since about August, I think, and I'm really working on the outreach stuff for us, so I'm on the Outreach Permitting Interaction Group, so we're working on having some town halls more aimed towards youth. And then we're also currently working on, uh, working on putting out more newsletters. So if you guys want to look up our website, we have been putting out some newsletters to see what we're doing, but I think Maya covered most of the rest of the youth commission stuff, so I'm going to hand the microphone back over to Mayor Blangiardi. Thank you.
Thank you, Mackenzie. Yeah, and I mean this in a compliment, they're all like that. They're all so smart, they can talk so well, and they're so committed, and we, we get excited about that, and I thank you both. Thank you both. Nice job up here, too. Nice job. All right, um, next thing we get to do, as I'm very proud of the men and women behind me, um, last year we did this. We, we did eleven of them over the course of ten weeks, and we positioned it as a journey of learning for us. It was our first time, and, uh, and that's exactly what happened for us, was the opportunity to get up close and personal in all the respective districts. So tonight is a combination of either directors or deputy directors, um, representing them, and just for you to meet them, and then once we get through their introductions, uh, we'll just talk a little bit and we'll get, we'll get the program going, okay? So Laura, is your microphone on? Okay.
Aloha. Thank you for having us here tonight. My name is Laura Thielen, and I'm the Director of the City and County Department of Parks and Recreation, and a longtime Kailua resident, raised here and raised my children here, so it's great to be with you tonight.
Hi, everyone. I'm Kim Hashiro. I'm the Director for the Department of Customer Services, and our department includes the DMV, Satellite City Halls, and Public Communication.
Aloha, mai kako. John Nauchi, Deputy Director of the City's Department of Transportation Services. Really happy to be in Kailua. I was born, raised on the Windward Side, Ahoui Manu, Kahaluu, and Kailua, so really nice that, to see faces I recognize out in the crowd.
Aloha. My name is Dita Hollyfield. I'm Director of Enterprise Services, 96744 Valley of the Temples, that's where I get to go home to every single night. Um, the Enterprise Services features the six golf courses, the municipal golf courses, the Blaisdell Arena, the Waikiki Shell, and of course, our number four in the nation, the Waikiki Honolulu Zoo.
Aloha, everybody. I'm Donna Puna, DPP, Department of Planning and Permitting Director. Thank you for having us.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Bugs Bagio. I'm the Assistant Director of Human Resources. I can speak on behalf of the mayor and everybody here. If you are interested in working with us to help the community see any one of us here, and we'll be happy to talk to you about our vacancies and our positions that we're recruiting for. If it's not you, maybe somebody in your family, but please, talk to any one of us here. I also have Andrew in the back there and our outreach team in the red, and we have people also from HPD and HFD, so thank you, everyone.
Aloha, everyone. I'm Kevin O'Shea. I'm the City's Deputy Director of Housing. It's a pleasure to be with you.
Aloha, everyone. My name is Keith Suzuka. I'm the Deputy Director for the Department of Land Management. Thank you very much for having us tonight.
Aloha. My name's Anton Kruckey, and I'm the Director of the Department of Community, Community Services. And so we do all the human services for the city. We do elderly services. We do the grants and aids. We do all the HUD programs and the investments from HUD. We also do the Work Hawaii group that does outreach and rent-to-work programs, and then we, we also have the childcare coordinator in our department and also the homeless coordinator in our apartment. Thank you for having us tonight.
Aloha. I'm Ben Sullivan. I'm the Deputy Director for the Office of Climate Change, Sustainability, and Resiliency, and I want to thank you, this young woman whose name I didn't catch, for mentioning the state's 2045 goal. I hope a lot of you are aware of that, and we're working hard to achieve it. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Brian Gallagher. I'm the Deputy Director of the City's Department of Design and Construction. We perform all the heavy construction services for the various city departments. It's city buildings, fire, police, roads, drainage, parks, et cetera. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Roger Babcock. I'm the Director of the Department of Environmental Services. We take care of everybody's waste, wastewater, and refuse, and we're very glad to be here. Thanks for having us.
Good evening, everyone. Good to be here. My name is Mike Formby, and I'm the Managing Director, and in this role, I have the honor of working with all the men and women up here. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Krishna Jaram. I'm the Deputy Managing Director. Thank you for taking time out of your evening to be here today.
Hello. My name's Andy Sugg, and I'm the Mayor's Chief of Staff, and very happy to be back in Kailua where my son learned how to kiteboard.
I'm Jim Ireland. I'm the Director of Emergency Services. Our department has EMS, the ambulance service, ocean safety, which is our lifeguards and rescue patrol, and also Community Service Core Team, which is our community medicine branch. It's the newest part of our department, and I work closely with Anton and Community Services in helping to address the houseless folks throughout Oahu. Thank you.
Yeah, good evening. My name is Stephen Courtney. I'm the Deputy Director for the Department of Information Technology, better known as DIT. DIT is made of 160 dedicated professionals providing IT services for all, for all these departments. Thank you.
Aloha, everyone. My name is Lloyd Yuninaka. I am the Executive Secretary to the Neighborhood Commission, and we oversee all of the Neighborhood Boards. And tonight, we have some people from the boards here. First, I want to introduce Bill Hicks, who's the Chair of the Kailua Board. And any other board members we have tonight? There we go. All right. Good to see you. You guys do great work. It's actually tireless work, and I just, on the record, you guys got a good board. They're very active.
Aloha. I'm Randall Platt. I am the District Four Major for HPD, the whole of the Windward Side of Oahu.
Hi, good evening. My name is Jennifer Walter. I'm the Deputy Director for the Department of Emergency Management. Our job is to work with all the agencies you see here, you, the community, businesses, nonprofits, to make sure we're prepared to respond, recover from major disasters and emergencies. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Mahalo. Thank you for allowing me to be here. Jean Albano, Director of the Department of Facility Maintenance. I'm, the department is the responsible for maintaining cities, streets, roads, streams, facilities, electrical systems, and so if you need anything maintained that's from the city, you come see me. Thank you.
Uh, good evening, everyone. My name is Erwin Kawata. I am the Deputy Manager at the Board of Water Supply. Thank you for having us.
Aloha, everyone. I'm Carrie Castle. I'm the Deputy Director with Budget and Fiscal Services. I'm a longtime resident of Kanoehe, and I, I'm sure you agree with me that those of us that would get the privilege of living on the Windward Side, you know, it is quite a privilege to be in this side of the island.
Aloha, everyone. Sam Moku, Mayor's Homeless Coordinator. Glad to be here. Born and raised in Kanoehe.
Aloha and good evening. Kim Sparland, Deputy Director of the Office of Economic Revitalization. Uh, we're a new office, really born out of the pandemic, but really pivoting to make sure that our work is really rooted in what you want as a community, and that's why these events are so important to us, to be able to come and listen to you and what we want our economy to look like. We understand the economy is more than numbers. It's really about the people, and that's what we're, we're really striving for. So I look forward, I had a great conversation earlier before we started. Happy to talk with anyone. Let's talk about how we're going to make it better for not only ourselves, but our next generation, so thank you.
Aloha, mai kako. My name is Ka'eli Trask O'Connell, and I'm the Executive Director of MOCA, which is the Mayor's Office of Culture and the Arts. Especially glad to be here tonight with this community because this is my community, born and raised Kailua girl, so mahalo for being here.
Aloha. My name is Kevin Muklihua. I'm one of four Assistant Chiefs in the Honolulu Fire Department. It's an honor to be here this evening. Thank you.
And just quickly, that man right there, Scott Humbert, Director of Communications. Ryan Wilson's on our communications team. Brenda Higa's in the house, and he ensuring our communications team is here. I didn't introduce myself earlier, so I humbly say, I, my name is Rick Blangiardi, for those who don't know, and I have the privilege of being and serving as the fifteenth mayor of the City and County of Honolulu, and I'm very proud of these people. So let's just a couple of house rules tonight. We didn't come here tonight to make speeches, okay? So what I'm going to ask in return, so we can get through as many different issues as possible, because I know there's a tendency to come up to a microphone and make a speech, and we don't want to cut anybody off, but we don't want speeches up here. We want questions, okay? And to the best of your ability, be succinct, be as comfortable. The other thing I'm going to ask you, and I opened up saying, this is a passionate group of people. We know this community. I think it's one of the things we were all excited about coming over here tonight, is that we also know the kinds of issues that are going on, the frustrations in some cases that run deep, and the passions are there. We will be as civil to you, I don't want to say as you'll be to us, because I'm just, I'm asking us, we just get into a really civil discord tonight, okay? We're proud to have the roles that we have, all of us. This team in just three years is doing things that people said couldn't be done. I could not be any more proud of that. So part of that process, and part of our experience, and part of our ability to deliver is sessions like this. So the last rule I'll say is that we will get to everybody over the next ninety-plus minutes. Rather than form a line, that doesn't work, and I know, uh, last week, we had some great cooperation and copulation. We had no lines. People just simply came up here and sat there, and then had person, we answered it, and we moved on. I will try to answer whatever's appropriate for me and anything that you want to ask me. That's why we're here, but also want to be able to draw down and rely on the expertise of the men and women behind here, not only in what they might say to you tonight, but what we do is establish a personal contact, you know, that you can have, and you, we'll stay here, we'll find that out, so to get the proper follow-up to the best of our ability. All right? So with that said, um, let's have at it. So I don't know who's going to be first, and, um, who wants to come up? Bill Hicks is going to come up first. And the only other thing I would ask is just, you know, introduce yourself so at least know who you are, okay?
Aloha, Mayor. My name is Bill Hicks. I'm Chairman, Kailua Neighborhood Board, and, uh, housing is, is in the newspapers. Senate Bill 3202 is a radical approach in Kailua. A house could be replaced with nine to twelve houses on either side, two-story houses on the, you know, R5 or R7.5 lot. It's a very radical approach. We appreciate the City Council this week passing a resolution in opposition to 3202. But there are other ways to skin the cat. The governor has mentioned, a lot of the solution is already built in the illegal vacation rentals. We appreciate that you came to Kailua two years ago to sign Bill 41. We know that, uh, new technology is being rolled out. Wonder if you could comment on, on, on how we can convert our short-term rentals into long-term housing for residents? Mahalo.
Thank you, Bill. We'll talk about short-term rentals, but I want Mike Formby, who attended a meeting that I couldn't go to last night, to address the first part of your question, because he's more up to date on this. Um, so I'm going to turn it over to Mike, and then I'm going to come back and talk about that. Thank you. And by the way, Mike is very modest. In case you don't know, Managing Director, all the departments report to the Managing Director. The only people who report directly to me is Corporation Counsel, the lawyer, the lawyers, I should say. But Mike is our, he's our quarterback, and he's our head coach, and he's the guy that is aware of everything, and so he's a very understated guy. I'm so blessed, and we've been all grateful that he's on our team, so this is a voice of authority.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Bill, thank you for that question, and by the way, we've all had a good professional relationship working with Bill and the Neighborhood Boards. I appreciate that. What I wanted to let you know is that, um, we had a meeting last night at the airport, and Tommy Waters was there, and Esther Kia'ina had her policy staff member jostling there, and we asked to meet with the state and to get everybody in the room, so Kauai was represented, Maui was represented, Big Island was represented, and Oahu was represented, and the discussion was the bill and how the bill could be respectful and made better. And so we spent about two and a half hours at the airport. Council did pass a resolution with, which helps us negotiate with the state. Um, I think there is a determination on the state part to move forward with a bill. Um, I'm not going to predict whether or not it's going to pass out, but I think they're going to move forward with the next hearing, and we've been working very hard with the state to try to make it something that respects the people on Oahu. So I'm not sure of the exact language. I think it'll come out this weekend because I think the hearing is on Monday, or two, is it Monday? At least, the hearing is on Monday, and so I just want to let you know that we're all concerned, but we're doing our best to make sure that it respects a community of more than 500,000, which we are on Oahu. And our position is that not every county is the same. What might work on Kauai and Maui and Hawaii might not be best on Oahu, where we already have dense neighborhoods and problems with parking and roadways and infrastructure, so we're working very hard, but, um, it's a state bill, and we're weighing in. So Mayor, unless Esther or Tommy want to offer some comment on behalf of council, that's, that's the city's position.
Thank you, Mike. I have to tell you, I'm, uh, very disappointed in our state lawmakers who are trying to tell, um, the county how to, um, do land use, uh, planning. I believe that their efforts are discounting both, uh, the city's and communities' land use and planning processes. Uh, there is no affordable housing provisions or owner occupancy if the intent is to keep local families home. And quite frankly, I believe that as currently drafted, it's going to lead to speculation by outside investors to buy up a 10,000-square-foot lot and divide it into 2,000, so five 2,000-square-foot lots with a, um, single-family home on each of the lots with two accessory dwelling units, so fifteen units on the property. And so I just ask that everybody be vigilant. Just because you say that your intent is to increase housing units doesn't mean that that's what it's trying to achieve, and so with all due respect to our state lawmakers, I vehemently oppose their efforts at the legislature.
All right, so let's talk about short-term vacation rentals, and since Bill talked about the bill that we passed two years ago, just to take you back and just give you a couple of numbers to think about. In 2019, it was a high-water mark for tourism to the state of Hawaii, and that also meant, obviously, Oahu. We did about 10.6 million visitors that year, wrote in about $18 billion in revenue, and actually, out of that came about $2 billion in sales tax. And that was, um, for want of a better way to say it, not good for this place, and I'll tell you specifically why in a second, but that money was so, so big, so unprecedented. And if COVID hadn't come in 2019... And if COVID hadn't come in 2020, the projected numbers for tourism that year were over 11 million. If it'd been the first year, we would have gone that high. What is of interest in that 10.6 million and where they were coming from is that 3 million of those visitors stayed in illegal short-term vacation rentals, okay? And we had a disproportionate number of those illegal short-term vacation rentals on this island, some 10,000 to 14,000 homes. When we decided to pass that bill, we made some exceptions in the resort zones, because we knew the people who bought condo hotels, and it would be safe there. What we were concerned about is the integrity of the neighborhoods, and especially knowing full well, because we had the mapping software, many of those were here in the Windward Side and all the way up the coast. And so 3 million people doing that is not good business. It wasn't good for the state, irrespective of anything that anybody would argue about money. That was putting the wrong thing first. Local people really got subordinated, and we wanted to do what we could do about that. What's even more insidious is that 50% of those short-term vacation rentals are owned by people off-island. What's even more insidious is that 27% of those own 20 or more. These are companies, they're not individuals. And it drove up housing prices. It took rental properties off the market. It brought out, quite honestly, the worst in people, which sometimes unfortunately money does. So we intervened with that. But we found out that, you know, it wasn't all that easily done. Unfortunately, and Dawn's here, I'm going to have her come up in a second, Takauchi Apuna, who's our Director of DPP, that particular role of enforcement fell in the hands of Department of Planning and Permitting, along with monster homes, and along with the complete revision remake of what everybody told me coming into office was the Holy Grail, you'll never do it, fixing DPP. And if you saw any of the newscasts last night, or read any of the publications, Star Advertiser, Civil Beat, or anything online, Dawn conducted a pretty lengthy press conference yesterday with the remarkable improvements we're making in investing in people, processes, and technology. And if you caught our State of the City address, I talked a lot about that. And these are problems that we're taking on that were decades in the making. There's no quick fix, no quick fix. We know that. Our job up here, the way I perceive being Mayor, this job is about problem solving. Fundamentally, that's what the job is. Take all the other fanfare away, it's about problem solving. But we know, and we believe, in order to solve a problem, you have to first really understand the problem. So once you get that understanding, which took some time, remember our first year in office was all COVID? And that's not an excuse. People have short-term memories, but that was more than disruptive. So it was all, you know, and so we understand the problem, we've developed the solutions, we've made the investments, and now we're in that execution phase, and things will happen. And so I actually think that, and I'll let Dawn talk about it, with the software we've invested in, the people we now have, that along with the things that we're doing with respect to the permit approvals, that our enforcement of short-term rentals is going to go to a different level. We know we need to do that for the sake of this island. And I know that we're at odds now, based on what Governor Green just said on Maui. And I know that there are people in this audience tonight who feel strongly, if I own a home, you don't get to tell me what to do with it. And I should be able to rent that out. And that's an issue, and it runs deep. But we care more about the integrity of our neighborhoods and what it's done to us. And 3 million people staying in illegal short-term vacation rentals subordinated everybody. It wasn't good business, even for the tourists who are coming in and paying high rents. To give you a perspective, if you talk to the hotel operators, because we're not building new hotel rooms in Waikiki or elsewhere, there was a new Marriott put up a new, I think it's a timeshare kind of a deal in Waikiki where the old Nike town used to be. But they'll tell you that the sweet spot for visitors to the state is somewhere between 7.5 and 8 million, at a 90% occupancy for 12 months a year. And that's a number that could be good business if done right. But to get to 11 million is not. And to have that disrupt the neighborhoods and take properties off it and do a lot of other things that were not good is something that we take very seriously. Dawn, I don't know if anything you want to add about the team you've put together now and the software and just...
Thank you, Mayor. So I can talk a little bit more about short-term rentals. You know, in 2022, when the new ordinance came out, and we were able to have a team dedicated for enforcement, and with those resources, we were able to kind of get at the low-hanging fruit. A lot of the fines were issued, and we were able to close towns some, but we know there's others, and they're very sophisticated. So for instance, my staff recently told me, the short-term rental enforcement team, that now when they go online to look at different ads, it's a different view than when they go home and use their home computer. So they, a lot of these short-term rentals, they can identify government computers or the city ones, and then they're able to change the listings to avoid enforcement. So they're like one step, two steps ahead of us. We're constantly trying to catch up with them. But moving forward, we have this team, we have certainly the technologies that I spoke about yesterday for permitting, et cetera, but we are getting a new short-term rental enforcement software, which is a game changer too, and that will be soon. We're, we've just gotten into the contract, and that's going to be able to really scrub the websites over, you know, 60 different websites and to automatically take screenshots so we don't have to manually go through and do that. So that's going to really be really helpful to create an evidentiary package. We also are doing other new things like foreclosing on properties that are just really troublesome, and they don't, they'll get an NOV, they'll get fines, but they'll still continue to do the same behavior. So we're stepping up enforcement in that respect, foreclosure, liens, et cetera. So we have a lot of great new things beyond what we were doing in 2022 that will further, you know, step up enforcement against short-term rentals. So I hope that you'll be able to see that soon, but I think it's going to take about six months to get the whole software up and running, and that's really going to pull a lot of them offline. We are also working with State Department of Taxation recently. You know, some might be paying the taxes or not paying the taxes, but they have these well-running businesses, so we're going to go, we're partnering with Department of Tax to do that as well.
What are the fines, Dawn? What are the fines?
So there are $10,000 daily fines for illegal advertisements, and those accrue much quicker than normal fines for a lot of the land use and building violations that we have. So I hear you. We have a lot to do in that area, but we definitely have new upcoming ways to deal with it.
$10,000 a day is pretty serious. Thank you, Dawn. And we've actually collected already, despite the system, we've had fines like that, where people have come in and paid $50,000, $60,000. The other thing that this department does, and I want to give a shout-out to Tommy Waters, our Council Chair, and I think Esther's been involved in this as well, is with respect to monster homes, which I think goes back to even what we're talking about, what seemingly seems like a different version of that. And last year, DPP, I think 15, we stopped 15, a couple of licenses. I mean, we're trying to get all over that stuff. There was a lot of stuff that went on. We're just going to get, we're getting better and better at it. And technology really does help us. We don't have enough manpower, you know, to do it the way I would like to do it, old-fashioned way, but this technology is going to help us. So just, I think that's, we covered that topic. If there's any other, any questions on that, I'd be happy to take it. But who has the next question?
Aloha mai kako. My name is Jenna O'Leary. I live over here on Kailua Bay Street. First, I want to say thank you to HPD. We always see them driving around, but the backyard stuff that you guys do that people don't see, for someone like me, my children go to Kailua, you guys stepped up and really helped with the drop-off, pickup issue that I spoke with Natalia about. Lieutenant Kiabu is who we worked with. I personally want to just shout you out and say thank you for spearheading that and keeping our kids safe. So thank you. My second question is for you. So you're a problem solver. I am a foster parent for nine years, and I have been trying to get a gray can and a blue can from my house, and I have not gotten not one for nine years. And I got six to eight foster kids at a time, and I just need your help to get me some cans.
There's a guy behind me.
Yes, please get me cans.
His name is Dr. Roger Babcock. Dr. Babcock, he's right here.
I'm here.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, I'll get with you after. I'll get your address and find out, find out what the issue is.
Thank you. And just one more thing to Lisa Martin. So the little girl that I had from the Kailua home, we have just adopted her. Mahalo.
Yeah, God bless you. I would tell you that that comes up a lot. You talk about being Mayor, I get those calls more frequently than I should, which is why I knew you were here. All right, who'd like to come up next? Sir?
Hi, my name is James Sung, Kailua High School grad. I'd start off by asking you, do you have a master plan for this island?
Have a master plan for the island? What do you mean by that? Okay? I could tell you this, if you were to say to me, if you could cut me open and cut my brain open and say, what are the things, that's about to keep me up at night, but the constant, it's about the city's role in housing, it is about homelessness, it is about certainly fixing DPP, it is about public safety, which is probably number one, and not only building our police department, but all the other elements. And the other part of it is, and was already talked about tonight, is the city historically has had way too many vacancies. And I don't care what anybody says, but the lack of manpower ends up being a lot of excuses why things don't get done. And we need that, and we budgeted for it. It's been the craziest time to hire people post-COVID. But today, I just happened to have a meeting with Secretary Del Toro, Carlos Del Toro, Secretary of the Navy. One of the things he talked about across America is the loss of the blue-collar workforce, okay? And it is really a phenomenon, because I grew up in a blue-collar family, and I, you know, have always, so we said a master plan. The problems we're working on sort of fit to that. But, you know, candidly speaking, and I'm not passing the buck, this is the City and County of Honolulu, but that kind of stuff sits over in the state too, you know? And so, but we're attacking those problems, James. Go ahead.
So I would, with your permission, I would like to work with the 36 neighborhood boards, because what one board feels like they need in their neighborhood is different from Kailua, right?
Correct.
Downtown in Kailua.
Yes.
So I would like to work with the 36 neighborhood boards to create a master plan, including the homelessness, public density, public safety, public transit, traffic, road safety, climate change, renewable energy, and also a way to increase the revenue in, at least in the county, and also decrease costs. And I see all this...
I welcome that, James.
No, so that's what I like to do. I mean, I see two people here that I feel should be talking to each other, the renewable guy and the guy who deals with waste management. They could work together and actually increase money in the state. HUD person could decrease the HUD person and the person who deals with homelessness. They could work together and deal with homelessness at a very low cost. And I'm trying to work with, what's his name? He just became the Housing Czar with him on dealing with this subject.
John Mizuno at the state?
Yeah.
Yeah, he works with Sam Moku, our homeless coordinator, right? Let me tell you, homelessness in and of itself, and all of these problems, and I talked about it in State of the City for the last two years, are wicked problems. Until you really get into it, you find out just how complex they are. And they go deep, and they run deep, and there's a lot of other issues and ordinances or whatever. But I'll say this on behalf of this group, and the reason why they're even here tonight, this group works together. We've talked team from day one. You know, I'm new to politics, I'm not building a political career, okay? At my, in my roots, I'm an old football coach, and everything I did for 43 years in broadcast, after my years of coaching football at collegiate level, had to do a team. So that's what I believe in. One of the things that we knew about the city coming in was it was a little bit dysfunctional from the standpoint of everybody operating in silos. So when you suggest these guys talking together, I can promise you, they don't only talk together, they work together. And that's how we're getting stuff done. But these problems are not simple, and I'll be happy to talk to you later on. But I, you would think, people tend to think that they're just linear in nature, and they're not.
Well, I agree with you.
Okay.
But, you know, it's just pushing people like John Mizuno, I talk to him all the time. He's my next-door neighbor, you know? So I do talk to him quite a bit, and a lot of things I talk to him goes over his head.
Okay.
Hope he's not watching.
We'll tell him you said that, James. All right, thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you. All right. Sam, you get that? You just told us to... Yeah. He took, he took your picture right now. Hey, come on, come on. Who's up next? Please, sir, yeah, ma'am.
Aloha, kako. My name is Teresa Parsons. I used to live in Kailua with all of my friends here. I moved out to Kaneohe, out near the Ko'olau watershed. And my issue and my concern and my question is about things that impact almost every one of you standing here or sitting here, and that is the maintenance of the streams and wastewater and keeping them clear, because what I see in all areas, that when there's a heavy rain or there's runoff from, you know, a construction place that doesn't have their management practices in, we end up with people getting injured, people getting sick, which impacts the city in terms of ambulances and hospitals and care. So my question is, is that is there something in your plan to establish a robust team? I know there's a few people that do this, but a robust team to maintain the storm drains and the streams that cross every part of this island?
Okay. Great question, Teresa. So Jean O'Bonos here, who's the head of Facilities and Maintenance, partly, I'm going to have Jean come up here for a second. Let me ask you a question, Jean. How many vacancies do we currently have in Facilities and Maintenance?
In my department?
Yeah, in your department.
Roughly 200 plus?
200 plus.
We started off with 300 plus, so we're making headway.
We have all those positions budgeted for. We are doing things, and Bugs is up here, you heard his little pitch. Anybody who wants to work for the city tonight, please don't leave without seeing us. We're in a recruiting mode. For me, coming in as somebody who ran organizations and as an old coach, the first thing that hit me in the face was the amount of vacancies we had and the ramifications of that. And it was bad enough to come in during COVID, because we got sworn in right in the middle of COVID, which was a challenge to begin with.
Oh, yes, I know.
But, but we lose on average, the city has about 10,400 employees, maybe 10,700. We lose on average 500 a year through retirements. You lose really good people in other forms of attrition, people, lives change, people don't work out, they don't like it, whatever. And we've been hiring at a number around that or less. And so we came in looking at 3,000 vacancies. And we, in a team that wanted to get things done, know that that's unacceptable. And this has been a difficult market. And so, but I would tell you, the city historically, for an enterprise that was as big as it was or is, didn't recruit, no recruiting. And you have to feed the beast. You have to do that. You know, in any organization, you should always be recruiting. There was no recruiting. We did the diagnostics, we were public about it. It took 180 days to get hired by the city, 180 days. I was at the zoo last week, meeting with one of Deena's people. I was so impressed with this young woman, I asked her, what brought you to the city? She said, well, it's really kind of funny, because I applied, I never heard anything for seven months, I kind of forgot I applied, I was working at a vet center, she's a vet tech, but I really wanted to work with big, big animals, and that's what she's doing. That's what was going on. So, so we're recruiting, just as a plan, I'm going to let Jean handle that. Recruiting is one. Two, training and development. City was not good in that, because part of the losing people is, are you, especially in today's workforce, are you developing people?
Right.
We're doing all of that now. We've got, we've done things, and we've changed, and Mike's been doing some great work with the unions, changing pay classifications that were also totally disavenging the city and other things like that. And then the last thing that the city wasn't doing, and these are the pillars of any organization, you recruit, you retain, develop, develop really good people, make sure you're doing that, especially in leadership situations. And the third thing is succession planning, virtually no succession planning. And you know, if we had to work for a profit, the city doesn't work for a profit. If we had to do that as a business organization, it wouldn't survive.
Yeah.
Okay? So we're addressing all of that, let Jean talk specifically. I'm really proud that they made headway on 100 people, but we want the others. And we, and thanks to City Council, Tommy, I'm going to say it again, and Esther, they helped us understand that, and we've been able to work through, and in our 25 budget right now, are trying to keep these positions budgeted with the belief that we're going to get there in our recruiting efforts, because if you don't have the manpower, that work, that hard work doesn't get done. Jean?
Thank you, Mayor. So with regards to your question specifically to stormwater, my... So with regards to your question specifically to stormwater, my department has a specific division called Stormwater Quality. And we are required to then comply with federal, state, city regulations in terms of its impact to the environment. We recognize that stormwater is not just stormwater. It is wastewater, it's water, it's one water. And to the city's credit, I've been only with the department less than a year. They have been very proactive in understanding that water is a holistic approach and that all the various departments are collectively working together to deal with all of these issues when it comes to water. Stormwater quality, obviously, you mentioned about when we have storms. We are trying to recruit. We recognize that staffing is very important. As Mayor mentioned, we have to get it down to the grassroots. Blue collar is important.
Yes.
Inasmuch as we want my kids to go to college, not everyone goes to college. So we are trying to recruit at that level, down to the elementary level. We've done recruiting, we've done workshops, anything to recognize that we have to man up when it comes to that type of resources and the ability to just maintain stormwater quality. We have planning. We have to look forward in terms of how we address stormwater. This is probably a white elephant in the room. We need, we need investment. We need the city to recognize that without funding, we can't improve infrastructure. We can't man up. Therefore, we are seriously thinking that there's going to be a need for stormwater utility rate. Inasmuch as it may impact someone's paycheck day to day, other major municipalities have stormwater utility rates. So it's important that as Stormwater Quality Division, we are going to introduce progressively the responsibility of being a citizen and the importance of how we address stormwater. I hope I addressed your question.
Thank you.
Well, without, without water, it doesn't make any, it doesn't make any difference how much money you make if there's no clean water. And the last thing that I would wish for, Mayor?
Yes.
Is to have the Kapaaakori landfill open later at night, so people will stop dumping on the side of the road after it closes.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that, Teresa. Roger, is there anything, I want, before, Roger, anything you want to add to that?
Yeah, you know, I'm actually not sure what the hours are of the transfer station.
No, it was, yeah.
Six o'clock, yeah, so.
It wasn't on that question, I was even on the water question, but you can answer anything you want.
Yeah, sure. So for the, so we have seven convenience centers plus the three transfer stations that are open to the public. Generally, they're all open 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM, seven days a week. The convenience centers, anyway. I think that the transfer station, I don't think it's open on Sundays, but it is open on Sundays. Okay, good, thanks. So, yeah, having things open later than that is, of course, would be a challenge, you know, for us. But, you know, we could look into it. Yeah, so cleanup is, you know, so that is a problem. And I think that we do periodically do cleanups with help of, with help of DFM. But it's not, you know, not a continuous basis. We, like I said, we do collect the refuse, which is the, generally, you know, the gray, green, and blue carts. And those are single driver vehicles, and they don't get out, they don't do manual collection. And we do have manual collection routes as well, but we don't really have crews that go and clean up the streets, right? So we collect from residences. But, yeah. And then, as Jean mentioned, we do, we do, we have what we call a one water panel and group commission that looks at all of our partners, Border Water Supply, DFM, and us, looking at water as a holistic thing, including wastewater and everything else, so.
Thank you, Roger. And incidentally, we cut the 180 days down to under 90. Just one last thing. And I'm convinced with technology now too, that we've just invested in, again, took some time to put in place, will be under 60. We're actually engaged in same-day hiring now, something the city's never done before, in block hiring, where our people up here are empowered not to have to go through all the red tape to make those kinds of hires. So it takes people to do this kind of work, and we're doing everything we possibly can. Scott?
Sorry, I have a quick announcement. There's two cars that we need moved that is blocking the basketball court. A white Tesla 823C, 823C, and a white Honda Fit PW06B. If you could move those, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Ma'am?
All right. Thank you so much, Mayor Blangiardi, for being here. And thank you to all of your staff for being here and hearing our concerns. My name is Leavani Lipton. I chair the Kailua Neighborhood Board, Kailua Water Quality Subcommittee. And I just wanted to put a human face on the issue of water quality. And if you may, I'll just share a very short story. I don't think many of you are familiar, but I would like to share this, and I will punctuate it with a question, so.
Not a long speech, though.
It's not a long speech.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good.
I want to share a story about the human cost of pollution in the bay that we know and love. If you ask enough people, everyone knows someone who either got an infection or was afraid of getting an infection from the water, from the canal that we as paddlers practice in every day, or from the ocean that we swim, surf, kite surf, fish, that our children splash in, and the babies who drink water from. Everyone here who is wearing blue has shown up to express their concern for the health of our bay and our waterways that lead to the ocean. You'll see a lot of blue in the room, and there are signs, protect our bay, protect our ocean. I grew up on this beach, it holds my six-year-old footprints. The issue of water quality hit home when one of my longtime committee members, Anna Kopuna, who was an avid swimmer of Kailua Bay, called me on December 15, 2022, to tell me that he was having open heart surgery for the second time to replace his heart valves, two of his heart valves. He'd been telling me since 2017, this is something we've been advocating for, that the water tasted different, it smelled different, and it looked different. And after his initial open heart surgery, when he was fully recovered and he returned to the water to exercise, both of his heart valves became infected. So he's been diagnosed with endocarditis and inflammation of the lining of the heart, and he continues to fight for his life and for clean water. In fact, his wife shared with me that he was admitted to the hospital recently, and he was wearing a blue shirt because he planned to be here tonight. We must stop the brown water and runoff from entering the bay. We must do everything we can to stop the bacteria from discharging into the bay from the wastewater treatment plant. And we must do a better job of warning the general public, our ohana, and our visitors, our revenue, when the water is not safe. And so we're really grateful for the steps that the city is taking, and we're glad that we have Director Albano, who's been receptive. But we need regular street sweeping, regular cleaning of the stormwater infrastructure, and we need enforcement of best management practices on construction sites so sediment doesn't pollute our waterways. And one of the things I wanted to ask you, Mayor, was how about having a hotline for the community to report brown water events and clog storm drains? I often get pictures of either brown water or storm drains and culverts that have tons of trash in them. And we, as a community, as you know, we're vocal, we're vigilant, and we want to be a part of the solution. And so many of us may have a stan in our lives, and we ask that you and your administration do everything possible to help us improve water quality in our community of Kailua and beyond, so that there will not be another person who has to suffer from a serious illness. So my question to you is, what steps could your administration take that might be different from previous administrations to help us with this very significant problem?
Well, I think the thing we're doing is what we've already discussed, which is trying to build up our workforce so we can deploy people to do that. There's no denying, right? As far as a hotline, you want to try that?
Yeah, yeah, sure. So thanks, thanks for being here, Leavani, and bringing that up. And thanks for all the work that you do with us on some of our stakeholder advisory groups and stuff like that. And our main stormwater guy, Randall Wakamoto's over here, you of course know Leavani. And we, you know, getting, getting, getting the community involved and letting us know what, where things are and what's happening is really important. So I'm not going to talk too much about the stormwater. Maybe Jean will talk about, about the stormwater runoff. That's a whole big, you know, whole big can of worms.
And could you speak to also, sorry to interrupt you, the enforcement? Because, you know, we have to stop the pollution before it even enters the waterways, and there's over 600 storm drains that empty into Ka'elepulu. So one of the challenges that we face is that when there's developments that are upslope and they don't follow the best management practices, all of that flows down, and then when there's a big storm, everything washes out into Kailua Bay and alters the ecosystem. So what measures could you take to better enforce, you know, developers following those protocols that are supposed to help to protect?
Yeah, that's a good question. So to answer that specific question, I'll have Dawn come up.
Thank you. So if there is new construction and, you know, they should be subject to wastewater requirement or stormwater, right? So we, and if you have an issue, if you see something, then you should report it to DPP, and we'll send out inspector. And if there is a violation, we can issue a notice of violation. So we would be the unfortunate arm for that.
We actually have, Kim Spelling just told me, the 311 hotline as well, right? That you can actually send pictures to, to alert.
You can. I think the fastest way, though, for that specific situation is to call DPP, and they'll send somebody out, and they'll document, they'll take pictures, and they'll issue citations. And I'll just say something about wastewater, though, because I know you know about it and all the work we're doing at the treatment plant. So we are, we did enter into an agreement with EPA. We're doing upgrades to specifically address the bacteria, the Enterococcus, our discharge permit requirements. So we're installing a disinfection system, a UV ultraviolet light disinfection system, which doesn't use chemicals, uses light. And that, we had a deadline to issue a contract and a notice, notice to proceed NTP by June 1st. We've already issued that, so we've, we have a contractor awarded a contract. And so that work will be starting very soon and be completed hopefully before our deadline, which is the end of December of 2025. So we're hoping for a faster construction schedule. We also have a second project as part of that to rehabilitate the bio towers in the secondary treatment process. And we anticipate, we fully intend to meet our deadlines on those, and that will greatly improve the situation.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I just wanted to offer one example. I appreciate the comment about contacting us. Just, I think, two weeks ago, there were two neighbors of a lot having a construction project ongoing, about maybe three parcels from the waterfront here in Kailua. And, and they saw the rain, and they saw the runoff, and they were concerned that they didn't have a grading permit and weren't using best management practices on the lot. So they called, sent it to Dawn and DPP. Dawn had her inspectors go out within two days and issue a notice of violation to stop the activity and to clean up. So you're the eyes on the ground in the community. If you see stuff and you let us know, we will take action. So feel free to call us. And you can call either the Department of Facility Maintenance, you can call my office and Managing Director's office, or you can call DPP, but we will follow up. So thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, you know, there's only, I want to add one other thing, and it's so much your main to that. First of all, city's under a consent decree, but if you were to go out to Sand Island Road and see what's being constructed, this is really a 21st century thing. If you saw the wastewater, and I know this is not the kind of trip you'd ever want to go on, but out at Honuuliuli, what we're doing is unbelievable. And, I mean, so there is that sensitivity, you know? The bay runoff, the kind of stuff Mike's talking about, but I'll tell you, as somebody who lives on an island with everybody, the work that's being done there is unbelievable. And even the plant itself, at Honuuliuli, it's, if you saw it, I know when Mike and I did the tour, we said, if everybody could see that, they would say, wow. I mean, I feel pretty good about my taxes to all this. So there's a lot of interest in this subject, because it goes right to the essence of what you said about stan. Our lives are on the line here. We're all reminded of that during the whole Red Hill thing and what our water meant to us. And so I just know that, and I think we're going to stay sensitive. So to that end, I want to say, I forgot to say this, on the short-term vacation rentals, okay? And that is, we have a confidential hotline, and nobody's been exposed. But as we've had to deal with the devious people, and all the other machinations and trying to catch, and so on and so forth, if you were to call and say, you know, I live in a cul-de-sac, I'm in Kailua, and next door to me is a party house that never used to be, we will, we will take that. That will help us. In fact, that has really aided us in some of the cases where we're able to, I hate to sound like we're playing gotcha, but it is about that. Okay? For what it's worth. Ma'am?
Good evening. My name is Malia. I'm born and raised in Kailua, and I love that I look around and I can see my classmates and people who are also Kailua kids in this community. I have a couple of questions, because Kailua looks very different. While the heart is still in this room, there's a lot of things that we face in terms of homelessness and the MH1 impact to our community. That's one question. And what is, you know, I know that you have built the behavioral, you're building the Evil Lake Crisis Center. What does that mean to this community?
Sure.
That's one. Two, I heard you on a recent radio show talk about the landfill issue out in YPO. And, and there's a great, perfect puka over here on this side. What does it mean to Kailua and the Windward side in, say, 10 years? And then I also have a complete street question, so, because we have a traffic issue, right? We definitely have some traffic.
And Malia, because you are a Kailua resident, I'm going to let you break the one question rule, we'll go with all three.
Okay.
All right? Okay, so the first one, if I'm not mistaken, is what, just give me a tip on the first one? Homelessness, yeah. Well, you know, I said earlier, when James was up here, you know, housing homelessness, we've made a big deal out of it. You know, it's amazing that on our island, what equates to well less than 1% of our population, especially unsheltered homeless, is in every research project we do, number one issue with people. It's a number one issue. It's in everybody's faces, become much more pervasive, it's gotten spread out, it's no longer located. So we decided to take a different strategy. I'm going to bring up Dr. Jim Ireland in a second and talk about core and what we're doing and what's different. But we looked around, we knew that the compassionate disruption wasn't working. Having, calling our police department, having them be the tip of the spear, picking up the people's stuff, just shoving them somewhere else. While we still do cleanups, that doesn't deal with it systemically. And so we looked around at the cities in the country who are having the most success with homelessness. And we looked at Denver, we looked at Boston, we looked at Houston, really some great success in Houston, even Eugene, Oregon. And so the first thing we wanted to do was develop a mobile crisis unit. Because 911 calls, and our police department's here, and our first responders are here, you know, I don't have the actual 23 number, but the 22 number, we're waiting for that 23 number to come in, was over a man. And about three quarters of those calls were involving either homeless or some kind of element that wasn't a criminal thing. And so we would deploy an ambulance, EMS, and we would deploy HPD, they would show up at the scene. And if there wasn't anything criminal going on, HPD would leave, the EMS would pick up based on what it was, or provide some street medicine, or take them to Queens Hospital for a shower and a meal, and get some bandages on, and put them back out a few hours later. That was costing Queens over $500 million a year in lost revenue, not the least of which was emergency rooms or triage centers. So the idea of having a mobile crisis unit would be to mitigate the pressure on EMS and our police, and we intercept the 911 calls. I'll let Jim talk about that. The second phase of it was have the places to put them. So since you brought up Evil Lake, you know, we bought recently Evil Lake Center. There's two things going on at Evil Lake. It's kind of an epicenter, because we have the Pu'ulai Rest Stop over there and the H4 Project as well. And that's really in the urban core. But we bought four acres as part of a transformative agenda on a plan going forward for the city. And we bought the first Hawaiian Bank building on King Street, and we're negotiating for several parcels in between that, to ultimately, within the next several years, and I know I'm on this side of the island, but... this side of the island, but with Skyline, our rail going in there, and the opportunity to build mixed-use housing, and what that would afford us in that area is a complete redevelopment of not only residential redevelopment, but Evil Lake as part of the urban core. So we have that facility, which we're going to treat as a triage center, I don't want to get too much detail, Anton Kruckey's here, but we have other city-owned facilities that we're moving people in. The X factor, I'm sorry that John Mizuno's not here, maybe Sam can talk about this and Jim, the X factor had to do with the healthcare workers. That was, we just talked earlier, a couple of different situations about a lack of manpower. What we lacked, because you can't rely on emergency room personnel, was clinicians, psychiatrists, doctors, healthcare workers who could work with this group of people, assuming the city could pick them up and we could take them somewhere, who is going to take care of them? And that's what the governor, and that's why our collaboration with the state, I'll let Jim talk about it, and we're just now beginning that, we're right on the threshold of making some real big inroads. Our triage center alone in Evil Lake, we think, and the Evil Lake Resource Center for Mental Health is the first of its kind in Hawaii, that just opened up. That was a facility we still own that we're letting the state use, because they're going to populate it with psychiatrists to deal with people who really have serious mental issues. And that's just been a few weeks old right now. I'd like Dr. Ireland to come up. I got two guys up here, one's got a PhD, Babcock behind me, the water guy, and then Dr. Jim Ireland. These guys are very modest in achievements. But Jim, I'd like you to come up, and Sam, I'm going to have you come up too, to give you some color. But I would tell you, when somebody just said to me, what are you going to get done? We can't end, we won't end homelessness, but we will take a huge bite out of homeless, a very big bite, and especially in our residential neighborhoods. And so Jim, why don't you take it away?
Thanks, Mayor. Jim Ireland from Emergency Services. Just want to recognize my friend Jim Howe in the audience, our previous director of our department and a friend, lifelong career lifeguard here with Ocean Safety. And, you know, we're not going to, the question's on homelessness, I'll get to that in two seconds, but I'm really excited too about the direction of Ocean Safety, going to become its own department within our city. And so I'm a little sad as the last combined director, but at the same time, you know, looking forward 10, 20, 30 years, this is really an opportunity for the lifeguards and coming kind of a full evolution in their profession as a public safety first responder. To your question, what she mentioned was MH1, and that's a psychiatric hold. And when the police or a doctor or EMS puts somebody under a legal psychiatric hold, MH1, MH4, there's different acronyms depending on what type it is, they generally take them to one of two facilities on Oahu that do inpatient psychiatric care, Queens Medical Center, Castle Medical Center. So I think the issue is, if folks go there under these holds, they're there for a period of observation, which could be hours, days, or even longer, depending on their treatment and whether or not they're voluntarily staying, and whether or not they can be legally held longer, they get released. Like, I guess the concern is, when they're at Castle, and maybe they came from Kanoei or they came from Pearl City, or they came from Hawaii Kai, then they're now discharged from Castle and they're here hanging around and just now, okay, now Kailua's my new home. So one of the things with CORE that we're doing is, the first year and a half of CORE, we were learning how to engage people, how to help them. But one of the things we learned is, there was nowhere to put them or help them, because housing just takes too long. There's a process, and Anton's department runs that, he can talk about the vouchers and what we do, but it's not something that is a solvable thing like tomorrow. It's like you have to wait. So we needed more shelter space, we needed this psychiatric center that the state's doing. And I predict, between now and the end of the calendar year, you'll see more progress on Oahu in homelessness and houselessness than we've seen in a long time. You know, the mayor and my boss, Mike, and Krishna, and Anton, and Sam, we meet every week just on this subject. And we meeting with the governor on a regular basis, and it's really elevated to a different level now on a solution-based, and learning from what other communities are doing too. So one of the things that I want CORE to be able to do, and this Evil Lake Center, about 100-bed shelter there, is going to be opening in the next few months, this resource center that the psychiatric stabilization center, also in Evil Lake, opened a week or two ago. So one of the things we want to do as CORE, we have ambulances, we have old city ambulances that were converted from EMS. We want to actually engage the people in the streets, get them to the ERs if that's what's needed. But then, when they're done in the ER, we don't want the ERs to say, okay, pat them on the back, you know, see you later, and if they, because they don't need to be in the hospital. And you've probably seen on the news, Queens Medical Center has struggled with this, because they just go lay right on on Miller Street, and now they're just kind of on the sidewalk in front of Queens. And I wonder, because I live in Kailua, so I wonder, the people I see, are they from Kailua? Some are, some were, you know, born and raised in Kailua, but many aren't. And so we want to find solutions for the people who are from Kailua in Kailua. But if they're not from Kailua, we want to find solutions from them somewhere closer to their friends and family. So one of the things we're developing with CORE, literally as we speak, is CORE identifies somebody who's in need of help, and then they go back to the ER, the hospital, when it's time for discharge, and then we take them to one of our, either Crisis Center or one of our shelters or something that, you know, CORE or the city is affiliated with, Honu. And so we don't, like, strand people in communities, okay? So that's one of the big things we're working on CORE. CORE, we're the operational side, but I'd also like, you know, Anton to say a few words about.
I'd like Anton to say something. One thing about CORE, not all old ambulances, you had three old ambulances, we just bought you two new ones, we had five ambulances and six SUVs, and we've got 35 people, and we're expanding that staff to 50, we hope, to be able to provide island-wide service. That is a force, if you will, a capability, probably is a better word, that we never had before, to really engage and to deal with people who are out in the streets. So Anton?
Thank you, Mayor. Anton Kruckey from the Department of Community Services. So as complex as homeless is, and Sam and I work very closely on this all the time, and we work with Jim and the other departments, as complex as it is, and it is complex, because you're dealing with individuals that come from many different situations that are, that become homeless, as complex as it is, there is a strategy. And the strategy's got just two parts. The first part is, is what creative things can we do to get to someone to be willing to engage the system, right? And then the other part of that strategy is, we constantly analyze our resources to service those decisions. And I would tell you right now, like, that list of creative things we do is twice as long than when I first got into this position. And the resources constantly change based on the demographics that we have. So I'll give you a couple of examples. When CARESAC money came and people said you use CARESAC money wisely in government, we went after a different segment. Most of our money for homeless goes to the most chronic homeless, people that don't want to be housed. And we said, let's just take this money, because it's not encumbered that way, and let's go after people that want to be housed. And with that money, we housed 300 families, 850 people off the street. Now, what that did was those were mostly women with families. And so what that did is it changed my demographics to male, single males on the street. So now your resources have to be different. You're going to have more drug issues, more mental health issues with that demographics. So we have to change the resources to apply to that. But right after we did that, right after we did that, I did 312 emergency housing vouchers and just finished those up. So that's another 300 people and families that have been housed. The deal is, is if we don't put them in a bed, a bed of some kind, we haven't gotten to a solution. And so I need beds of many kinds. And so when I talk about the resources to service those decisions, I'm constantly looking at what resources we can do. And I think you've heard some enthusiasm here about things you'll see coming up, that's because we're looking at those resources and we're trying to bring them online, right? Whether it's Behavior Mental Health Crisis Center, right? Whether it's another house where we went for a blessing today for 12 units in a house for homeless, right? In a Kahali concept where they act as a community, right? And in that community, that's part of the healing process, understanding that a person that's coming off the street has a lot of trauma to deal with. We want to not just house them and put them in a bed, but put them in a bed that works for them, that makes them successful. So I think this administration is very serious about this. We're working on other Kahalis, more beds, right? We're going to be trying to do some on the Windward Side, we'll be doing that as well. Again, everything creative we can do to get somebody to be willing to engage the system, and then constantly analyzing our resources and bringing more online to service those decisions. We really are trying, but we have housed a lot of people in the last few years. But they're still homeless, and I appreciate that, and I appreciate the frustration with that.
Yeah, we think we got about $4,000. I wanted to stay on this subject for a little bit more, ma'am, okay? Real quick. Sam, anything you want to add to this? Because Sam is our point guy to work collaboratively with the state. And the reason why the state's so important, and maybe you all realized this during COVID, is that that's where the Department of Health lies, with the state. As a result, they have resources and monies that we don't see at the city council. And unless I forget, and I'm not pandering, believe me, because Tommy and Esther know this, I don't have to do that with them, our city council's been great to work with on this. We are in this in a really great form of collaboration to really make a difference here. And our collaboration with the governor is unprecedented, and the resources that are going to be made available for us to have the workers that we desperately need is unprecedented. So Sam, what do you want to add to this?
Exactly what I was going to add was our partnership with the governor and the state and John Mizuno and I, you know, the resources are important for homelessness. You know, back in the day, when the city was doing it on our own, you know, the resources was very limited. And now with the partnership with Gov. and the mayor, there's going to be a lot more shelters that we are going to start building, start bringing into communities. And one of the things is, we do have homeless on the Windward Side. I live in Kanoei, and I'll see them. I don't see a lot of them, but I know they're there. But we cannot, we cannot have the not-in-my-backyard anymore, when we, when we're looking at where we're going to build shelters, such as the Kahali that is down by Windward Community College right next door. So it's our, it's our kuliana as well to take care of the homeless. And, you know, we cannot just keep on shipping them to Evil Lake, Honuulu, you know, let's take them out there. We've got to embrace the homeless here too. So I just want to just give a shout out for that, and that if one day I'm in this community and I ask you for help, please, kokoa, okay? Mahalo.
Thank you, Sam. Stay there. One last thing to give you a little bit more hope. Yes, Malia? Part two. Oh, the landfill question. I'm going to punt to Mike on the landfill for a second, because, but that's all that he and I talked, I drove tonight, I'm his driver, the whole way over, we talked about the landfill in the car. So Mike, he said, if we get asked, I want to take that question, so.
Yeah, I appreciate that question, and I'll give you sort of the latest update, because it's been a long time coming. We had a landfill advisory committee, which did not pick a site, because two things had happened. We had Act 73 passed the state legislature, and that restricts basically buffer zones around residential communities, hospitals, things of that nature. And then the Board of Water Supply, because of Red Hill, put a no-pass zone around the island. And that basically limited the available lands for a landfill. And so we've been going through this process of trying to determine what the eligible sites are, so that we can have a discussion with the communities about where they might be. We made a decision that we would not put, mayor made a decision and a commitment to the YNI community, that we would not put a landfill on the YNI community. And from an operational standpoint, it's just not a good location to have all of the trucks and haulers going all the way out to the middle of the YNI coast to dump their refuse. So we made a decision not to do that, not to go to Waianalo, I mean, sorry, not Waianalo, not to go to YNI. And then the second one was Waianalo and Bellows. Military has land there, and that's just not suitable for a landfill. There's residential community all around it, and there's the ocean on the other side. So that left YPO Peninsula, which we're looking at right now, the military has not greenlighted that land for the city yet. We lease it right now. Laura Thielin, DPR, has a lease with the Navy for the soccer park. And we know that there are thousands of families and soccer enthusiasts. Mayor and I have no desire to put the landfill there, but right now, that's the only place left that has not been greenlighted for us. Everywhere else is either conservation land over the aquifer or within a buffer zone. So we're waiting to see if the Navy can accommodate us and make YPO Peninsula available, then we'll have the conversation with the community. And if that is something that the community is not willing to accept, we're going to have to go and maybe seek an amendment to Act 73, so that we can look at other places that might be available, or we're going to have to talk to the Board of Water Supply about possibly going within the no-pass zone. But that's, that's the limit that we have right now, because there's simply no options left, and shipping refuse off of this island is not an option. So we have to find someplace, we know that wherever we end up is not going to be popular with some community, but we're determined to do it fairly, objectively, and have community conversations, so that everybody can weigh in. That's our promise and commitment.
That's great, Mike. You know, Dr. Babcock would tell you, we could build a landfill over an aquifer and it would never leak, right? With today's technology and the fact that we put ashen in the landfills, it's not like the old dumps with the seagulls flying around, it's very different. But candidly speaking, after Red Hill, nobody's buying that. Nobody. Even though that's possible. I see you shaking your head, Lee, that's the issue. So we have, all of our water on Oahu comes from aquifers. The whole island is a no-pass zone. Somewhere in there, we've got to come up with a new landfill, okay? So one last thing, you stay, please. Just so you know, when I talk about the state, so you know, the governor was able to get $30 million passed by the legislature for tuition loan repayment plans. Now, these tuition loan repayment plans, the first class of 492 people received it, can extend all the way up to $50,000 a year, provided they work in this field. So that's how we're building the workforce. So, you know, for somebody who's making $60,000 a year, and they had college loans of $40,000, whatever that prorated amount, they can't even save enough with the cost of living to be able to do that. It's been very impactful, and we're getting more and more people. So we're going to build that workforce, that really vital, important workforce with those monies and that kind of commitment. And we're developing facilities, as Anton told you, we've got the capability of picking them up, and we're focused on that. I just want you to know, one last thing on homelessness. The demographic shifted. The point in time count said we got about 4,000 homeless people on Oahu. 2,000 of those are sheltered, 2,000 are unsheltered. Of that 2,000, more than 50% of them have been on the streets for 10 years or more. Of that, of that number, nearly all of them, I don't want to say absolutely all of them, suffer from, just about all of them, some form of mental illness or addiction. So we've said repeatedly that homelessness is not a crime, but that is a tough individual to work with. And so it takes a lot of care, building trust in a lot of facilities or whatever. So just to give you that perspective, that's why it's not a simple problem. Ma'am, to you.
Thank you. I'm Heather Shank. I've lived in Kailua for 20 years, and it seems like the water quality of Kailua Bay has gotten worse and worse and worse. It seems I get a brown water alert almost every day. So I appreciate that you've now given a contract to improve our wastewater treatment plant, but that's 18 months away, or?
Yeah.
And what can be done between now and then? And might we stop trucking sewage from the other side of the island to Kailua and maybe do more with stormwater? I live on Kalahaeo, we had the whole thing torn up for years, and I went and asked Construction, they said, oh, we're just putting in wastewater, we're not doing anything for stormwater. And isn't that the thing that overflows the capacity? So my question is, great that you're, that you've got a contract and it will improve, but it's a long way away, and there are a lot of tourists that come and find nothing but brown water. It's disgusting, it's a health problem, and it's our economy. So what are we going to do between now?
What's your first name?
Heather.
Heather, I'm sorry, Heather. Roger.
Thanks, Heather. So there's a couple, a couple of different things there. Brown water and wastewater are not the same thing, although you wouldn't know that from your own toilet, right? There's brown water there. But that's not what goes into the bay, that's not what a brown water alert is, that is stormwater runoff. So when it rains, the brown water is sediment, you know, that's running off from dirt surfaces, essentially, going into the storm. going into the storm drains and then it's being discharged, being discharged. Yeah, they're totally separate. So we have, so sewage goes into the sewer collection system and goes to the treatment plant. And stormwater, which is runoff from the streets and homes and parks and everything else that is a surface, goes into the storm drain system and that is discharged into the, into the nearest waterway. So that's the, that's the technology. So in terms of combating brown water, brown water alerts and stormwater runoff has to do with best management practices, which include essentially erosion control of surfaces, like, so grass is good to reduce erosion. And then also making infiltration, so permeable surfaces as opposed to hard escape like concrete and asphalt and stuff like that. So that is how you have to address, you know, the brown water. Wastewater is all collected separately. We have a separate system, two different sets of pipes. And wastewater goes to our treatment plant and is, is treated there. So what I talked about in terms of the upgrades we're doing at the treatment plant are not related to brown water. So wastewater doesn't cause, cause brown water. Wastewater gets collected and it goes through the outfall out into the deep ocean.
What about the fecal lumps, what about the brown water?
Yeah, yeah, great question.
Why don't you repeat that question?
Yeah, so the question is, what about the fecal matter or fecal indicators when there's brown water? So the fecal indicator organisms are present in soil. So when there's brown water runoff, there is fecal indicators in that water as well. That doesn't mean that there's wastewater in there. It just means that there, the same indicator organisms live in our soil as what are in our wastewater. So the brown water alert does not necessarily mean that there's, that there's sewage there. At least it's not coming from the wastewater plant or the wastewater collection system. Could be coming from cesspools, which there are some of, perhaps, or other things. Dog doo-doo or other things like that can, can have, you know, would have those indicators as well. So again, when we have a brown water warning, it's not because of wastewater.
You're still not supposed to swim in it?
That's correct. Yeah. Because the runoff, urban runoff does contain pollutants. And yeah, so it is, so that is why the advisories go up from the Department of Health, you know, not to swim in the water.
You know, one of the things I didn't say tonight that I usually say, and I'm going to hear from you, young man, because I just got word that you want to speak, and we're glad you're here with your friends, is that our efforts tonight are to listen carefully, try to address as honestly as we possibly can, but not necessarily tell you what you want to hear. You know, we're just going to speak the truth to you to the best of our ability. That doesn't mean we, we can't adapt to something from something that gets said, but you may not hear what you want to hear. And that's just the reality of it. The one thing I love about this team, I hold myself responsible for setting this tone, is to stay grounded in reality. Okay? Just, that's, that's part of the problem solver. You've got to stay grounded in the reality that you're dealing with. So with that, young man, you're up, spokesperson. Oh, you're a part of this?
Yes.
Oh, no.
Hey, like I tell you, I'm a kid. Now on a happier note. My name is Lee Kobe and I'm here with the Waianalo Biker Gang. Okay. They're just so excited because Laura went to go look at the park last week. And so they're talking to her about a possible BMX track. The reason I'm involved, I'm an environmental contractor. I've been involved in turning literally like a hazardous waste dump into a racetrack or a BMX park. Texas, Colorado, California, and here. So that's how I got dragged into this. But here's these kids.
We love your passion. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Zeke San Miguel. Our community and us Kiki are deserving of a safe place to ride bikes and scooter, et cetera. Thank you to Laura Thielen and Parks and Rec for steering this project and helping to create a recu-- oh my god.
Create a recreation?
Oh, create a recreational pump track. Our first location has been approved at Waianalo District Park. We would like to know if anyone that would be like to, would like to help with the process and sponsorship of this awesome project to give our community a safe place to play. Please research out for, to me for further details. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, well done. I'm going to bring Laura up here to address that. But does anyone else want to say anything? Why are you up here? No? You sure? All right. Okay, Laura.
Thank you, thank you for coming tonight. We have a lot of community groups that approach us at Department of Parks and Recreation to donate things to parks and who offer to build improvements for recreational uses in the parks. And we're really, really grateful. A lot of times people have ideas, and we usually ask them to work with the neighborhood board to make sure that the neighborhood board supports it and the community is aware of it. Sometimes people aren't able to carry the ideas out. But I want to say Holly here has a perseverance that is very admirable because it took a while to get agreement with the Waianalo Neighborhood Board to support the track. And I want to thank our park staff, some of whom are here tonight, because last Friday night, we all met out at the Waianalo District Park, and we identified a location for the pump track. We made sure that we stayed out of the soccer field, a little bit of, you know, space between the courts and things so we can minimize user conflicts. But we're able to take advantage of the landscape and to have a starting area that will work and maybe go into some of the overgrown area with just kind of the how trees and things and to clear them out and to have some pretty exciting facility there for a lot of younger people. And so these folks are going to need some help because it is going to be kind of a community project. So I really encourage you to reach out and work with them. And we're very happy to be their partners in this.
Thank you. Well done. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, who's up next? Sir? Yep, come on up.
Well, sorry.
That's okay.
I'm actually kind of nervous to ask you this.
That's okay. What's your name?
My name is Caleb Richards, and I'm from Kailua as well. I wanted to ask like a couple of tribute questions. First of all, how many people without their jobs and like how many people without paying their rent? And there was a community, I'm with, with HBH right now. So we're like part of Wings Group and, you know, like doing special effects, you know, dance class. But there is a community, like how many people will miss the Polylanes because it's about to go away and there's no people want to go bowling there?
Are you talking about the rent and utility relief program?
Yes.
Those monies?
Yes.
Okay, Kim, I think that's going to be over to you because there are some deadlines. But let me just say this. I say this with great pride. Coming into office on January 2nd, 2021, we're in the middle of the pandemic. It was, we were closed down since March. The fear, the uncertainty, and I've lived here since 1965, was unlike anything any of us had ever seen because none of us had ever been through that. In that day, in that time, there wasn't even talk of vaccines being readily available until the end of '21. And what we were experiencing was, in some cases, beyond fear. There was real panic going on. And so at the same time, though, the federal government responded with appropriations, which was unprecedented for the amount of money that they were giving to cities and counties around the country. And as was already referenced up here tonight, we got a lot of federal money to distribute, but there really wasn't a system or mechanism to do that. We were, when it comes to rent and utility relief, able to form a partnership with the Council for Native Hawaiian Advancement, Catholic Charities, we've even brought in Bob Harrison, First Hawaiian Bank, but our Office of Economic Revitalization. And to date, which the program's about to come to an end, we distributed over $300 million to over 21,000 families. I always want to say 24, 21,000 families. Those are families, if you hear me say in the state of the city, who did not become homeless because their rent and utilities were paid for. Those are families who also did need homeless services. So while we deal with the 4,000 homeless people we have, one of the things that did happen in getting through the pandemic is we really avoided what could have been an incredible catastrophe. And we were actually recognized by the U.S. Treasury as one of the best cities in America for having done that. I owe that to our team and the people that worked. That's one of those things sometimes from preventative standpoint, prevention standpoint, you don't really get to appreciate, but that was remarkable. And I'm really proud of that. But unfortunately, everything is finite. Monies are coming to a close. And I'll let Kim talk about that. Okay?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to give you my card so that we can follow up. Like Mayor said, he gave you the stats. I'm not going to go through the stats again. I am proud to say that Denise Aburro, who is actually the program manager for our rental and utility relief program, is here today. She is not only working on putting out the last of that money with CNHA and Catholic Charities, but also working on housing stabilization services and coming up with some more strategic things that we can do even beyond this money, working closely with Anton and his crew, with those, those that we're working with at CNHA and Catholic Charities to build capacity within the community to help this solution as well. Like Sam Mooku said, we all have to do this together. And we're not looking at just building our own capacity. We're looking at building the capacity of the people that take care of our friends and neighbors as well. So yes, unfortunately, the money is coming to an end, but that doesn't mean that hope is gone, right? We want to work with folks. We're going to try and find some solutions. Denise has over 20 years of experience in the Bay Area with solutions. We're going to find creative ways to make sure that we don't end up with more people homeless going into, you know, Jim's, Jim's shop here and Anton's shop. There's other programs within DCS, you know, Rent to Work and other programs that we work really closely with. So we, again, we got the best person here in the room to be able to answer this, fortunately. And we're happy to work with you. So you have my card. Let's, let's talk before the end of the night, before you go home, okay?
Okay, thank you so much.
That's great. Thank you. Nice job. Thank you.
I'm kind of surprised nobody else has asked about taxes. Everybody here must be a property taxpayer, right? Okay, does anybody understand what residential A category is? 10 years ago, when the median family house was about $600,000, the city council set a residential A threshold, at which point they more than doubled the property tax. Over the last eight to 10 years, that threshold has not been adjusted for inflation, which means that probably every 5,000 square foot lot home in Kailua and everywhere around it is worth more than a million dollars. And when it becomes worth more than a million dollars, according to the property tax appraisal, your tax is more than double. So if we're talking about housing for local people, and I have a home that's in long-term rental to local people, and my property tax has just doubled from $3,300 to $7,600 a year, who's going to pay that? What's going to happen to their housing security? Can you differentiate between people who churn their home for short-term rentals and others who have long-term? Please address that.
Good question. Okay. Carrie, you want to try that? I want to ask Carrie Castle. You know, I'm not passing the buck at all. I'm not a tax guy. I'll be the first thing to tell you that. But Carrie has worked with us as our head of budget and fiscal services. That's all you ask, Carrie?
Aloha. I'm sorry, I missed your name. Linda. Linda, thank you for that question.
I'm going to hold your microphone up, Carrie.
Sorry. Linda, thank you for that question. So residential A, the increase in rates, sorry, on residential A, the tier, it's for non-owner occupied homes. Is that your situation? Yes. Okay, yep. So you're correct. I think, you know, your point about the threshold not being raised in a number of years, it is something that, you know, you can bring to, bring to the city, bring to, I think, city council. We had a permitted interaction group to talk about the many real property tax issues. And there were approximately 31 ideas, bills that were being discussed in this interaction group. And out of that, you know, last year, we had increased the homeowner's exemption and increased the low-income rent credit, tax credit, sorry, for, for low-income families. Those two issues passed. We're, we're suggesting that there's more work to be done as far as real property tax rates go. And, you know, we, we discussed that we want to perhaps reconvene that interaction group so that we can, you know, look at further ideas. And your input is welcome.
Thank you, Carrie. Mike, you want to add anything to that? Okay. All right. Thank you. Sir?
Hello, everybody. My name is Kiony Salado. I am head football coach for Kailua Mustangs and Eastside Junior Surf Riders. We have a Department of Rec question. Is this Koveh the president of Kailua Mustangs?
Hi, I'm Koveh. I'm Kamala Malama. I'm representing Kailua Mustangs, but I also have kids that are part of Eastside Junior Surf Riders. I've been a part of this community and this program since I was even little. We also have coaches and former presidents of our program here tonight. And Eastside Junior Surf Riders representative as well. This is Mark Lum. You guys know him as Kailua High School's junior varsity head coach football. So I want to read off a letter we sent out this week. We're also partnering, partnering with Eastside Junior Surf Riders with our struggle with field permitting. I know it's not only Kailua Mustangs, but many other sports that are coming now that they're year-round that are struggling with getting field permitting. So as many of you guys know, Kailua Mustangs has been a cornerstone of our community since the 1950s. However, in recent years, we have faced challenges that have jeopardized our ability to continue offering youth program, youth football and cheer programs, as well as expanding to year-round operations in line with trends in other sports. As we explore the possibility of introducing a spring tackle season and witnessing success in our new flag and pylon programs, we face challenges with safety and obtaining field permits. During 2023's fall season, which is usually our only season for tackle and cheer, we were able to house 160 tackle participants, 40 cheer participants, and 15 flag participants ranging from ages five to 14. And with the progression since COVID, in one year span, we were able to provide sports for over 400 kids in one year. With Kailua District Park being the only official tackle field in our community and the only permit awarded to us, we had some major safety concerns as we have encountered unfair requests to conceal, sorry, concede field space for programs that operate year-round, exceed their permitted capacities, and programs that have multiple fields all year-round awarded to them. Additionally, we've even been asked if we are open to moving into other communities like Waianalo and Kaniohi to practice on top of also making way for the DOE baseball team that starts in November due to the new season changes that COVID ended up happening. When we requested an additional field, whether it be one or two, for our flag teams to alleviate overcrowding on the tackle field, we were informed that no fields were available. However, community members observed over months that many fields, including Mount Willy Neighborhood Park and Kailua District Park, remained unused throughout the year and season. As requested in our sports council meetings, this was reported to the Parks and Rec directors, and still we were unable to be rewarded usage as someone already had the permit. When we questioned that, we were brought up with, well, they have a three-year span to not have to not have a program. Well, they haven't had a program for two years, and that field still sits. We're not the only program that is requesting for these fields. You have years of other sports requesting, and yet it's not getting approved, or we have to fight to get it approved. It is stated in Section 1N of the Rules and Regulations for the Honolulu Department of Recs, which was actually, the bylaws and the rules and regulations were made in 1988. The Sports Council as an organization is tasked with determining athletic field usage equitable among various sports. However, with sports now operating year-round, the issue of field space inadequacy in the Kailua community persists, and bias favoring for certain individuals for equitable distribution has been consistently observed. Safety is paramount, especially when it comes to our children. We believe there should be flexibility to ensure their safety, even if it means adjusting field allocations. When we're talking about safety, we're talking about, we had to move over, so we have on our tackle side, there was 160 kids on a field at a time. We figured out a way to split our teams to ensure that everybody had a good amount of space, at least 50 yards within each field. We worked that out with each other, and as much as it's not the most operable way to run our football program, we have to make it happen. Then DOE, the Kalahia High School, has to use the field, which we understand that because they don't have a baseball field. Well, now we have to move while the ball is being hit or the ball is being thrown and having to watch our kids. When we requested to move our kids onto a field that was empty, we were rejected.
So is that the specific question?
How do, the question is basically whether there's steps for us to request transparency or even the amendment of the bylaws and permitting requests.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so, so we can talk after, because we're at the end of the meeting, I can meet with you folks over here. But in general, one of the challenges we have at Parks and Recreation is we have a limited number of fields. So the Kailua region, we have 12 ball fields. Most of these are softball or Little League, only a couple for baseball. We have 15 multipurpose fields, most of them are small, but we don't have a total of 12 plus 15 because what happens is a lot of the multipurpose fields are actually the outfield for the ball field. So you cannot have a ball game going on at the same time that you have a soccer game going on unless you wanna have it turn lethal. So we have to manage the permitting. The last sports user meeting we had when we were permitting ahead in Kailua, we had 14 groups coming in to try and figure out how to allocate essentially 15 areas that could be played on at the same time. So I think what happens in all of our regions where we have this problem, you know, we try to get the community to work together. It's become harder and harder over time because a lot of the leagues now play year-round. You know, when I was growing up, they were shorter seasons, or sometimes a league wants to expand because they're meeting, you know, a demand and really good services to the youth. And so we have to kind of constantly revisit how we do the permitting. I'd be happy to talk with you guys afterwards, and we can talk some more about that. As far as the transparency goes, there's a lot of complaints because this leads to confusion from a lot of people, especially when they're trying to get a new permit and they're dealing with a lot of other leagues that have been there for some time. We are working with our Department of Information Technology to move to an online system. We'll probably begin with the applications going online and then trying to figure out how we can deal with permitting issuance online. The fields are gonna be the most complicated, though, because of this problem that, you know, you can maybe permit a baseball or softball team to do some practices without hitting while a soccer or football game is going on, but we're at the points of even permitting strips of area. And then a lot of our fields are very small, and they're in residential neighborhoods, so we're having to time the permits. Like if you're having a little kid's soccer game, you need to have, all the parents are driving them there, you need to have a time in between games so all the cars can vacate before the next set of cars come in so they don't overwhelm the communities like Kalahia Neighborhood Park or Kawainui or Aikahi. So our staff is trying, you know, but we know that there's, there's a big demand. So let's talk some more, and it's just something we have to keep working with all the communities to figure out how we can meet the needs for everybody because all of these activities are wonderful activities, and we want to encourage them and have them all going on.
Kehony, we're almost out of time, but I think if Laura's here, we're not running out at 8:30, but I wanna end it at 8:30. Maybe we take this offline, or is there something you wanna say?
Well, let me just, since we're talking about safety for the kids, Junior Surf Riders is a, is a, is a program for the Kailua High School, right? So right now, we're practicing at Mono Wili Field, and we have to, we have to apply for a permit every month for the days that we have there. But right now, the person that has the, that we have to fight for the permit for has been arrested for child enticement. So how is that protecting our children if we can't have the space available for our Eastside Junior Surf Riders?
I'm sorry, I don't know what you're talking about, but...
So what we're, what we're fighting for is space at the, at the park. That gentleman who got arrested for child enticement has the permit. We have to fight for the permit every month. He's saying that he has a team, he does not have a team there for two years, and they keep giving him the permit.
Okay, so again, let's talk and we'll get some more information offline. I'm not, this is news to me.
No, let's, you know, this is not a short answer, just please stay, okay? Look, if anything, I wouldn't be here tonight if it wasn't for football in my life. So I understand what you're doing as a coach, respect that greatly, but more importantly, for the kids who get to play, what that means. I get it, I really do. Ma'am, we gotta type right, one more question.
Super, super quick. Thank you all for being here. Cindy Turner.
Hi, Cindy.
20 years ago, my husband and I bought a piece of property that also includes the Ka'eli Pulu wetland, and having grown up in Hawaii, but more on the beach side, I had no idea the impact of stormwater on our waterways. So real quick, quick show and tell first, this is what the wetland water looks like when we're not having stormwater.
Yeah.
This is what it looks like when we have uncontrolled stormwater runoff, and this kind of condition mainly comes from developers who have done clearing during rainy seasons. And one, one of the, one time when I called to report one of these developers, and your people went out, but I followed up 30 days later and asked what was going on with it, and I was told by the inspector who had worked on it that they like to work with the developers, they don't want, wanna give fines, they give them 30 days to, to change, and if it's not done, they, they give a notice of violation, and then another 30 days before a fine actually happens. And then the fine is really tiny. Can't we do more to discourage developers? Because I think that the attitude is it's cheaper to pay the occasional fine than do the right thing.
All right, I, I'm not sure, Don, you wanna, you wanna address that? Look, and just so you know, the pictures that Cindy showed was, you know, beautiful blue water with green marsh and then really dirty brown water. Okay.
After, after. Thank you, yeah, thank you for your question. I guess every case is different, and we want people to conform to the law and do the right thing. So generally, we go out, we inspect, and then if we, if we determine there's a violation, we can issue the notice of violation, the NOE, and then they do have time to correct before the fines start to accrue. So generally, it might be 30 days, depending on the type of violation. And so, and I think the prior, prior administrations, it was always just come into compliance and they would reduce fines to 5%. And that's no longer the case under this administration. We pursue 100% unless there's some extenuating circumstances. But that period is required, it's, it's kind of like a due process notice requirement to allow them to come into conformance with the law. The fines themselves, some of them are probably a little too low, and we're trying to look at all of them across the board and see how we can better, you know, if we need to raise them in certain, because they should, they should mean something, they should have teeth to them, so that's something that we are looking at, too.
If we can find B and Bs $10,000 a day, we should be able to find a wealthy developer $10,000 a day for, for basically polluting our waterways that go all the way into the bay.
Right, right, exactly.
All right, well, look, I, I think in the spirit of, does anybody have one last question? Because I don't wanna be the guy cutting it off and you're sitting there saying, I really, really wanted to answer that. All right. Morley? Don't make it a long question.
I was talking with you prior to the meeting.
Yeah, I remember you, sir.
And thank you all, staff, for coming tonight, and I know you guys do the best job you possibly can with very limited resources, and we all appreciate that very much. I am, my name is Morley Gray, I'm a longtime resident of Kailua, I grew up on Kaihulu Place, two streets from the beach. In 1957, we moved there. My dad was a plantation doctor on the Big Island, moved here to start the Winward Medical Group with two other guys, Dimler and Mertz, and some of you old folks in the room might have had my, my dad as your doctor.
Morley, I love the lineage, I'm just gonna ask you to ask the question, sir.
Okay, so, so here it is, real quick. I, I think we've all talked about the water quality of Kailua Bay, but the, I think the elephant in the room is the, the 50-year-old outfall that with the technology in that day was probably ill-conceived, and it is marginal at best. I think all of us who have been on Kailua Beach on a good trade-winning day, you've seen the brown froth, you've seen the color of the water, and you can smell it. I mean, I, I've been there all those years, and it's drastically different. It really is. I'm not bullshitting you.
No, we know that.
And, and so there's three things that's gotta happen, one of three. Either we got to limit the input to that system, make a better outfall further out, or treat that secondary effluent to a much greater degree. One of those, you know, all of them together would be great. For right now, we got to limit what's going into it, and that means developers, the development on the Winward side, gotta, gotta stop till we figure it out.
You're not running out of here, are you? We'll talk, you're not gonna run out of here, we'll answer this. Roger, you wanna take it, go ahead right now. You've got two minutes.
Yeah, sure. So we started to talk a little bit before.
Good answers there from Roger prior to the meeting, too, so I don't wanna delay everybody.
Can we just, can we do, unless, anything you wanted to say real quick?
Yeah, I was gonna say real quick that I'm happy to talk to you more about that. Yeah.
Yeah, I, look, yeah, let me just say one thing, I'm not gonna correct you at all. We may cry a lot of things, it's not about limited resources. We've, we've got resources, we have some limited manpower, but we pride ourselves here on, on some problem solving, and so I'm not gonna hide behind that. What you have here is a group of really smart people, committed, love where they live. This group came together during an incredible time, three years ago, we're in the middle of the pandemic. So I, we're, we like the problem solving and, and suggestions, and that's why we're here. I said at the outset of tonight's meeting, we're here to learn and listen to people, identify situations and do something about it. So that's what we'll do. So I wanna wrap up, oh, thank you, just stay, I wanted to listen to hear that, okay? Look, I just wanna thank everybody here. I know some of the people have already left, but those of you who've stayed, Tommy, Esther, is anything you wanna say before we close out the night? Okay? Again, thank you for being here. Thank you all for being here. We really, it's a privilege for all of us. God bless all of you. Thank you.